This conference will now be recorded.
Get started since the conference is now recorded. I would like it noted, Bob, you are not muted. And Roger is not muted, so I just thought I'd make mention of that. And thank you, Roger and Bob. And we'll go ahead and ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we'll follow that with the invocation from Jim Jenkins. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Pastor.
Let us pray. Your precious God, when we just talk ourselves before you, we thank you for who you are. We thank you that you're in complete control of what's going on. We just are really concerned with all that's happening. We're concerned about our businesses. We just pray that you'd help us to support our local businesses and that they would survive through this. We pray for our healthcare workers, our first responders, that you'll just give them safety, protection, and help them as they intervene on our behalf. We thank you now for this meeting. May it be to your honor and glory. Just guide our thoughts and what we say and our actions, and may it be honoring to you. So we commit this time in your name. We pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Rolling right along, I'll make note that this is an opportunity for citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. I ask that you present those to the city clerk. You can certainly do that by email or text to any of your council people that you may have difficulty in communicating with otherwise. That would be the easiest way to get your needs met. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the claims for city operations, the claims for public housing authority, and the minutes of the April 27, 2020 second meeting. Anything to be pulled by the staff? None? Questions, concerns, comments from the council? None? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Danny Gurley, I make a note, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded by Bob Reeves. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
You're muted.
Wrong one, yes.
A lot of say, let me get that. Okay, Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Okay. Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Onto new business. New business item number one, the Unified Government Quiet Zone Project. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What we have in front of you today is an intergovernmental agreement that's been crafted between the Unified Government and the city of Bonner Springs. To kind of refresh everybody's memory, the city embarked several years ago along with KCK, Wyandotte County, the Unified Government, and then the city of Edwardsville to review K-32 as far as a tri-city multimodal redevelopment plan, I believe is the full title. One of the items that came out of that plan was the establishment of a quiet zone. I also, I have Jeff Fisher, Troy Shaw on as well with the Unified Government. They can certainly speak to the project itself and the particulars of what's going on. But ultimately, what needs to happen to put the quiet zone into place is for Swingster Road, which goes down to the Public Works Facility. They need to actually do some improvements at that location. So again, the intergovernmental agreement that is attached speaks to that, the arrangement for it. Ultimately, this is a county project, so this is at the expense of Wyandotte County. And then also some particulars as far as future development. If you all might recall, the recreation master plan that was done, Parks Plan that was done, that called for a riverfront park to be established, so again, playing off of the multimodal plan for K-32 and our future plans. There is one item that is included in there. I can't remember which attachment it is. But that is in there to say that we would have sidewalks actually put across the rail line at the same time that the quiet zone itself is working its way through. So again, I have Troy and Jeff on for any particular questions and happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Very good. Troy or Jeff, do you have anything to add?
I don't. Sean did a great job of covering that ground. You know, like Sean said, we worked diligently to come up with an agreement that he thought was in Bonner Springs' best interest. So I feel pretty confident, and it's a good project. Troy may have some details, project details that he's the county engineer and the project manager on this one. Troy, do you have anything to add?
I don't have a lot. Sean did a pretty good job of saying what it was. But basically, this is in solid quiet zone, so trains go through, no whistle. As they go through this area, Swingster would be the furthest west crossing that we would do. And then it would be three more to the east as we go down. I believe to 98th Street is the last one. Edwardsville's doing some improvements along 4th Street with this project, paid for by them. They just decided to add it when we did their agreement with them. So there'll be quite a bit of improvement, but like Sean said, it's really just the work at the crossing and then the work for the sidewalks that we're talking about for the future development.
Very good. Seeing no other staff, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Jordan Mackey here. I make a motion to approve an agreement with the Unified Government for the construction of a quiet zone and additional improvements on Swingster Road.
Thompson, second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll start with questions, concerns, comments from the council by roll call, please.
Chris, you're muted.
Thank you, Danny. Shannon?
Yes.
Questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Mackey, questions or comments?
Kind of got two-part question. The first one is, how exactly is this being funded? I mentioned that with the worry that Wyandotte County and KCK, or Unified Government budget, is budgeted for negative $23 million for 2020. So I'm curious where the funds are coming from for this. And I guess I'll let you answer that one. I had another one about the contract, but I've noticed there are some updates. I can't find it at the moment.
Sure. Like Mr. Peterson said, this is funded from the county. It is already allocated. And the shortfall expected in revenues won't affect this project.
The other part was there, I apologize, can't find the exact paragraph anymore because I know, as I said, my original version updated and there's new edits in it. In this, it says that the Unified Government, it said something along the lines, the Unified Government can pull out at any time and I guess leave the project if funding is not available or if it doesn't happen or it needs to be reallocated. Why was that added to the contract?
Well, I believe that is fairly standard with almost all contracts. I don't know if that's the case with Bonner, but anytime like the body runs into budget shortfalls and has to pull funding, then they reserve that right. Like I said, this project's funded in any of the discussions that we've had. Eight does not include cutting this project. Not even that question.
This is Troy. I think there's also language in there. I don't know specifically the language you're talking about, but there's language in there that in the future, if it comes through, and this was part of Sean's concern, so I appreciate him bringing that up on behalf of Honor because it helped us as well. If the railroad comes through and says, okay, you've got to make a million dollar worth of improvements to keep the quiet zone, we may say, well, we don't have the funding to do that. So then at that point, we could say it will no longer be a quiet zone. I think that was part of the language in there, too.
That also said along with that statement, though, that Bonner would remove the quiet zone or actually terminating the quiet zone. Upon termination of the agreement, Bonner Springs shall continue to maintain all public infrastructure within that jurisdiction. So if you guys have to pull out and don't have the funding, is Bonner Springs stuck with a $2 million tab?
No, I believe the type of infrastructure, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that infrastructure they're talking about is the additional curb and great street improvements that we are adding as part of this, which is just basically road maintenance items anyway. I believe, is that right, Sean, from your opinion?
Yeah, I think the concern from the UG standpoint, and rightfully so, is they don't want to be responsible for the roadway itself over the long term of this project. But so again, the roadway itself or maybe some of the curb and guttering and things like that. But I think it's pretty clear in the agreement that the city of Bonner doesn't have any sort of, wouldn't have any expense with this project. And again, the main concern, as Troy alluded to early on, was that we certainly don't want to be responsible for the quiet zone and the potential for those lines to be expanded. Say another spur line or for some reason came across there, or they added a second line coming. But I don't think, which part are you reading, Jordan? The right of entry?
Jordan Mackey here. Paragraph five, duration of agreement. It's the added lines that underlined it?
Yeah. I think the, what's that, what that's speaking to is, again, I think more of the oh, I'm getting it pulled up here. The duration of the agreement, again, it more or less runs for the duration of the quiet zone. So as long as there's a quiet zone in place, this agreement would be on the books or valid. If the quiet zone were to ever go away, then the city has some responsibility, again, as far as just maintaining the crossing of itself as it is right, you know, right now. So again, I think we tried to do a pretty good job of isolating who's responsible. We could certainly clean that up a little bit more, too, to make it even more clear if that's a concern.
Thank you, Sean and Jeff, for all of that. My biggest concern with that was because of the Loring District. I know that we had quite an issue with trying to reach out to UG and about those funds recently. So that's why I'm hesitant reading through this. I just wanted to make sure the parties and our responsibilities are quite clear. Jeff, I see you a bunch on LinkedIn, and I know that you're really good about communication, so I appreciate that. I'll reach out. I know you've helped me with some projects before. I mean, if Sean's good with it, I'm good with it. I just wanted to note that concern because the Loring project and the lack of funding that UG was willing to reach out and give us, and I know that they made that a big hassle for, I believe, John and the staff, and I didn't appreciate that. So if Sean's good with it, I'll make peace.
And I just wanted to make sure everybody knows, too, that this did go through a legal vetting, both on the UG side and with our city attorney as well. A long process to get to this point. I think Jeff and Troy would agree. And I think there's still hurdles to this project as far as getting it through ultimately. We are dealing with, or we're not, the county is dealing with the Union Pacific. So that's, again, that's another stakeholder that's involved in this. But again, I just wanted to be clear that this has gone through a pretty thorough review on our end.
Thompson, question, comments?
The only ones I had were answered in this agreement and reference to medians and then right of ways and our responsibility as a city to maintain our portions of our streets. So nothing, nothing other than that. Thank you.
Wood?
No questions because so many have been asked, and I appreciate that.
Gurley?
Gurley, what's the timeline on this project? When are we going to be starting to lay out some money for these improvements on our part?
We have, this is Troy, we have already started design, and design is 99% done, basically, right now. So we have an agreement with Edwardsville. Once this agreement's approved with Bonner Springs, that's another hurdle we have done. And then the final hurdle is with UP Railroad. They have had major changes to their organization the last couple of years, which has caused a lot of communication issues in how we get response. And I think everybody's working really hard to get through that. They've just had a lot of changes. And with COVID, I know they laid off, or not laid off, but they stopped using some of their track repair crews and that delayed things. So we're working on getting agreements with the railroad right now. So the short answer is, I don't really know when we will get that agreement with the railroad because it's on the railroad's time. But we do have a design ready to go. The minute we get an agreement signed, we'll submit the plans to get reviewed by the railroad. Once their approval, we're ready to go. We have the funding sitting there. So I'm ready to go as soon as possible.
Thank you. Sean, where will our funding come from? Do we have a line item set for this?
We don't. There is not an expense to the city of Bonner Springs for this project. Again, this will be a county-managed funded project.
In terms of the sidewalks and the medians and curbs that we will be responsible for?
Eventually, yeah. I think that that's still one thing that, as Troy alluded to, they're working through the UP to kind of get that squared away as far as how the items are installed. But that, again, is not an expense that the city of Bonner is going to be covering as far as the initial construction.
We just take over the maintenance of it once it's installed?
Yeah, so the sidewalks, the curb, and then the street area, basically. And I don't know if it's helpful, maybe Troy or Jeff, can you kind of explain exactly what's being installed down at the, or at least at Swingster? It's not a, it's not a significant amount of stuff, I guess, to use that term. But again, I think it might be helpful for everybody just to understand what's being improved.
Yeah, if you, I don't know if you have the packet, but if you look at Exhibit B, that kind of gives you an idea of what it is and the limits of it. Basically, I think we're widening the road a little bit and putting a small median in between the north and southbound lanes of traffic. Those are requirements of the quiet zone. You have to have it to have the quiet zone. There'll be some additional signage, not a lot, but just normal street signs. There won't be the big flashing crossbars, nothing like that. It's just the normal street signs. And that's about it. And that shows up on Exhibit B, and then as Sean said, what you would see would be a sidewalk at some point that would go down that as well on, I think it's the, I can't remember the, what, east side, I believe. I'm not sure, maybe west. I don't know, I can't remember. But it's a sidewalk on one side at some point.
Thank you. No additional questions.
Kip, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, staff, for getting that done. I know there's a lot of businesses down through that corridor and residences that are going to be very thankful to be able to hear themselves. So thanks for getting that completed.
Stevens?
Yep. First question is, what's considered the railroad right of way? What's the distance on both sides?
Typically, I don't have the plans in front of me, the detailed ones for this, but typically, it's about 25 feet from the center line of whatever set of tracks is the closest. So if you go to the center of a set of tracks and go out 25 feet, that's roughly the railroad driveway usually.
Okay, because according to the agreement, that's what UG would be responsible for any maintenance as well on an ongoing basis, correct?
And I think, I think that's in reference to the work on the tracks for the quiet zone, if I'm correct.
Okay, because it's, yeah, I think it said the Bonner Springs would not be responsible for anything within that right of way, that that would be the UG.
Typically, that's the railroad's responsibility.
Okay.
They don't let you work in the right of way.
So kind of back to the item number five, which I know has been discussed heavily earlier, the duration of the agreement. Upon termination, if the roadway needs to get replaced back to its kind of original condition without the divider and such, will that then be on the city of Bonner Springs and completely tear that roadway up and get rid of those medians?
The way I read it would be yes, but they wouldn't, I mean, I don't know from an engineering standpoint why they would have to go away. But I mean, if you wanted to, they could.
But it would be on the dime, there would be no, nothing from the UG to help place that roadway back into a normal flat surface roadway without the median, correct?
Not that I see in this agreement. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, that's why I wanted to double check. That's what I'm reading it as well. No more questions.
Reeves? Do you have comments or questions? Reeves?
Yeah, one question anyway. I think this is a good idea. We've been waiting for it for a long time. But however, underneath the highway, underneath 32 Highway, there is another crossing there. Does our responsibility change any there because it's a quiet zone? There's another entrance there that the police used to use or still do use.
That was, so it's, that particular crossing is considered a private crossing. And it's my understanding, there's another crossing, I believe it's roughly around 140th Street, 142nd, so down in kind of the Loring area. The issue with, at least the one underneath K-32, or excuse me, K-7, that you cannot start and stop a quiet zone at a private crossing. So that moved the project. Initially, there was a plan to provide the improvements to make it a quiet zone at that private crossing under K-7. But again, because of the requirements that actually had to get pushed over to Swingster.
Would there be any cause possibly then at that private intersection that we should install some signs saying that the trains will not be honking?
Careful thing.
I'd have to look and see which one you're talking about. Is it, are you talking about the private crossing just to the east of Swingster?
Yeah, so get it first.
I believe we have to make improvements to that as well. They just aren't, we just couldn't start or stop a quiet zone at that point. But we still have to do some improvements to that because it's a crossing in that area.
Now, Troy, I think Mr. Reeves is referring to the west, which would be the access road used for the police to get back to the firing range, which is directly under K-7 Highway, which I don't believe is part of the quiet zone, and the horns will sound for that crossing.
Correct.
The horns will sound there? There's so much for quiet down there at, you know, at Moon Marble and so forth.
Yeah, the quiet zone basically is starting at Swingster Road and heading east into town. It's not actually, any of downtown Bonner is considered part of the quiet zone. Oh, well.
Is that everyone?
That's everyone.
All right. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Kip?
Kip, yes.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Mackey?
Mackey, yes.
Reeves?
Yes. Reeves, yes.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Gurley?
Gurley, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Mayor, the motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. A lot of good discussion. And yes, I think all those points have been very considered for quite some time. Onto that next agenda item, the Government Services Center Change Order Request. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are several, let me screen adjust there. Several change order requests. They've been listed out as well as the reviewed information is on the attachment. Generally, or approximately, rather, we're looking at about $25,000 change orders with both additions and credits because of some miscellaneous value engineering and a few other things that actually resulted in us getting a credit back. Dana is on the line as well. If anybody has any particular questions, I'm also happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. Thank you.
We'll see if anyone has any questions. We'll go along taking all of these requests together at one time. I'll ask for questions, concerns, comment by roll call again, please.
Do we need a motion first?
Yes, that's, well, well, very much. I appreciate that. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mr. Reeves. I make a motion to approve the change order request presented.
Shannon, second. Very good. So it's been moved by Councilman Reeves and seconded by Councilman Shannon. Now we'll have questions, concerns, and comments from the council by roll call, please. Christina.
Okay. Reeves?
No questions here.
Stevens?
No questions.
Kip?
No questions.
Gurley?
No questions.
Wood?
Wood, no questions.
Thompson?
Thompson, no questions.
Mackey?
No questions. I just wanted to give a kudos and a thank you to, I believe, yourself for doing the agenda and listing it out and made it very simple to read and life a lot easier. Thank you.
Shannon?
Shannon, no questions.
Okay. Ready for a vote, Mayor?
Very good. Yes, I also wanted to complicate, compliment, not complicate. Very good. Yes. I also wanted to complicate, uh, compliment, not compliment, uh, the information was presented in a very well, uh, very good manner. And, uh, we had lots of information to help ourselves through these changes. So yes, vote please.
Wood?
Wood, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Gurley?
Gurley, yes.
Mackey?
Mackey, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Kip?
Kip, yes.
Reeves?
Reeves, yes.
Okay. Mayor, the motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. On to agenda item number three, recreation programs, COVID-19. I hope we're not having a coronavirus program. I guess that as long as we remediate it, it'd be okay. Staff, please.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This is, uh, Justine Spees and Recreation Manager for the city of Bonner Springs. Um, we have before you tonight, uh, we're kind of asking for some help with some guidance as, as to whether or not we should or should not offer some of our summer programming, such as our summer ball league, um, summer camp, um, as well as things of the aquatic nature. Um, staff and I, recreation staff have done hours and hours of research, um, looking at best practices. Sean and Amber have helped out a lot with that as well. We come up with options as far as if we could, what it would look like. But in the end, what is going to be best for, um, not only our participants, but also for us as a city.
Is that everything?
Um, yes. I mean, we can start going off one by one. Sorry. With, with summer ball, I guess we can start with that, whether or not we would want to offer that, um, based on, um, recommendations from staff. It's probably not in our best interest. Um, but we're looking for you guys to kind of give us some more guidance on that.
Okay. Um, so we're gonna, we're going through, uh, summer ball program first, then we'll go through the other, the other concerns. So just one, our general concern, or do you want our interpretation how the phase restart Y code affects this?
I, if I can interject, um, I think the, what, what we're trying to do is to get a little bit of a handle, um, as well as, um, getting you guys up to speed on, on some of these practical issues that the city is now facing. So as Justine, uh, spoke to, we've got those, those three items that are, um, I, I would say kind of a hot button item just because of the fact that there, people need to register and we need to have some type of, um, decision made here quickly. The, um, and I kind of go through it really quickly, but the, the summer ball, um, ultimately there's just all, there is practical issues with trying to do that while doing social distancing, uh, while limiting the number of people that can, uh, mass gather. Uh, and ultimately the concern simply being that we're not sure how long each one of these phases is going to be. We know at a minimum, it's going to be a two weeks in between each phase. Um, so that affects everything. So you've got those, those kinds of things going on with summer ball in addition to the fact that we are in a, a, a league. Um, and several, I shouldn't say several, Justine, but a couple, um, at this point, I think they're listening to memo. Have already said they're not going to have a season. So the, the question starts to come up as to how could we even have a season um, without anybody else to play with. Um, it's just kind of a sad tale there. Ultimately, the, um, the camp program, uh, that we've offered in the past, that is run in the community center. Uh, again, practical issues with that is, is simply that we are housing city hall functions as well as recreation staff inside of that facility. Uh, at this time, we're not, that facility is not open. We're trying to make preparations to, uh, open that up to the public. But again, because of its sort of the nature of a community center, it's not the most ideal place to try to separate groups of people very well. It's, it's just kind of a big open space. Um, so again, there, there are some, there are concerns with, with running that program. And then again, um, just within the space that we have, given our, given everybody that's under that roof. And then on top of that, again, you've got your social distancing concerns. Um, you've got your mass, uh, gathering. Uh, again, the timeframe, we don't know. Uh, and then somewhat of a, uh, you know, reality of the situation being that just like schools, we're, we're trying to avoid, everybody's trying to avoid bringing multiple people, especially from different families together. Uh, ultimately, um, that's exactly what's going on in a, in a camp. So, and then lastly, the, the aquatic center, this one, I'm sure, um, most of you are aware, have seen in the news and, um, you know, things that I've, um, sent out. The, the practical side of opening up an aquatic center, again, trying to socially distance, um, people at an aquatic center is, is extremely difficult. It's never been tried before. Um, think about trying to take two, you know, two 10-year-olds that were swimming together and telling them they need to maintain six feet. Uh, on top of that, um, I think Justine put, has it in, uh, there as well. I don't have it open, uh, in front of me right now, but the, um, the concerns of how you actually enforce that at Aquatic Center, um, obviously the concerns for timeframe here too. Uh, we haven't hired anybody, um, as far as lifeguards are concerned, uh, and, and some of the managers and things like that that are there. But ultimately that's about a four week process to try to get them up and going. Um, so there's, again, I think Justine's in a good, good job listing the ways that we can kind of work through some of those things. Um, but ultimately it's, I think we all know it's a very difficult issue and, and a sensitive one, obviously as well. You know, as, as we all know, kids are, are cooped up inside and, and everybody's itching to get out and, and do some of these things. But, you know, again, this is, this is something that has a lot of practical implications as far as how do we do these things? And, and ultimately can we really do these things? Understanding, you know, the timeframes that we're, that we're working in right now.
That's, that's exactly, yeah, going through all three of them. I appreciate that. Um, I agree on all the different aspects. We have, we're impacted by, um, all our surrounding communities as well. And with, uh, the baseball program, um, the other areas, uh, counts, uh, Lansing, Levworth and Tongnoxy, all counseling theirs. And the others, uh, on delayed start, I don't see how you can have any type of league program with that. The state has a, a lot of concerns with, uh, team activities and, uh, uh, we won't be through the green phase until, uh, past the middle of June, um, perhaps the 22nd of June, if everything goes as fast as possible. So I, um, trying to have some type of abbreviated season with the costs involved and the potential, I, I don't see how we can feasibly do that. The same way with the summer camp. The, yeah, the summer camp is practically a daycare, but we, the onboarding of all of those camp counselors, which would now be daycare providers and the training and the, the, um, facilities with the, uh, pressure of the, uh, community center being used as city hall. I, I don't see how we can manage that as well. Um, unfortunately that's going to be a hardship on a lot of the community that relied on that. But I, I, I think we would be putting them in a greater risk than, than not. The, the aquatic center, that's a, that's another whole, uh, difficult pill to swallow. As much as we enjoy that and the community benefits from it, um, realistically expecting lifeguards to social be, the monitors for social distancing is not appropriate. So then you have another layer of, uh, supervision that has to be concerned with. The, it's a city pool and people expect that level of, um, supervision and, uh, uh, health care, um, public health. And I don't see how we can do that, starting the mid to late June and then onboarding all the staff that would be necessary for perhaps two months, six weeks. It's just not really feasible or realistic. I, unfortunately I don't see a way around these, uh, concerns. We'll go ahead and ask for, uh, staff comments, uh, first. Uh, this isn't an item for a, uh, are we looking for a motion? Yeah. We'll go ahead and make a, uh, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion, um, concerning these three things. See if we'll have a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Thompson here, based on Justine and her staff's, uh, really hard work on this, uh, document. And, uh, based on what I see in the dark document as a recommendation not to have these, uh, events, I make a motion to cancel the following recreation programs for summer 2020. Summer ball, summer camp, aquatic center swim lessons.
Reeves?
Been made and seconded by Bob Reeves' point of clarification. That is, is that swim lessons only?
It, are you asking if, for, um, what we're talking about from the staff side is that we would have the, the entire, um, aquatic center? We need to have some definitive decision on that. We still need to do some maintenance level things. Uh, as I think Justine alluded to as well, um, that, that stuff will get done with existing staff. But if, um, what we're looking at tonight is, is ultimately, um, a, some type of decision as far as opening or closing the aquatic center for the year.
That's why I was asking specifically. So, um, Councilman Thompson, does your, does your motion include, um, closing the aquatic center through this season? Not just?
Yes. And that's the way I was, yes, sir. That's the way I was understanding. And I was reading off the agenda page here. So it certainly does. Yes, sir.
And the second was by Bob Reeves. Is that how you interpreted it?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Very good. So there's a motion as second to cancel the, um, summer ball program, the summer camp program and the aquatic center and its programming. Uh, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start by roll call. Please Christina.
Shannon?
I knew you'd ask me first. Um, as much as, as much as it's difficult, because I know many of us, um, do not have children uh, that are involved in the programs, um, some do. I do have a granddaughter and I know how disappointing this is. But I think we've got to look at what is the wellbeing for our, for our kids and for our families. Uh, as difficult as, as much as we'd like to be able to make this available. With everything that's going on, things are still rising. Uh, there's no guarantees. I think giving them the, at least the, the knowledge that we will not be offering these things or they won't be offered this year. I think is, is, uh, will help them a, a little bit. But again, I think the safety and wellbeing of our families and our kids is, is the most important thing.
Mackey?
I guess similar to, uh, what Shannon just mentioned, um, thinking on the basis of the entire community, uh, I respect the decision.
Thompson?
Last, uh, Thompson here, last Wednesday, uh, all the, uh, local churches, uh, gathered for their, uh, minister fellowship. And they're struggling with this exact same thing. And wisdom must prevail here. And, uh, they're looking at ways of, uh, ministering, but not having their vacation Bible schools and their summer camps. And so this is a, uh, an important, uh, decision. And I think, uh, that we're making the right one. That's all I have.
Wood? You're muted.
I'm very, very unhappy that we wouldn't have these things because I know how much children and parents and grandparents depend on this. Plus the workers depend on it too. Uh, but it seems because we don't know what's going to happen as the green phase goes through or the other color phases. I guess I'll have to go along with it.
Gurley?
I don't like it any more than anybody else, but I feel like it's the right thing to do.
Kip?
Uh, Kip here. Why can't we hold a couple of weeks to see? Why is it time sensitive right now?
Because of registration.
Yeah, there's, as far as the aquatic center, all of them, just the aquatic center.
All, all the cities are going through the same stuff and many of them are holding their decisions. I'm just curious why it's important to do it today, seeing as we just reopened some phase today. And just a cou- a couple of weeks is a lifetime right now in information. So I was just curious why this is important today.
Part of it is trying, again, going back to that four, it takes four weeks for us to try to get, um, lifeguards. I, I can tell you that is a difficult issue right now anyway. Again, most of the time aquatic centers are staffed by minors anyway, um, a- a- as far as lifeguards and things are concerned. So that, um, that's been a conversation that's been going on is, uh, first and foremost, is there going to be the people that typically show up and, and want to do those things? Um, another part of that is, uh, season passes. We're not, I, I'm not sure if we're actually selling season passes. Justine, you can jump in on that one. But I think the part of the issue is that's where we make a lot of our money. Again, we don't operate the, the aquatic center, uh, in the black. So that's, that's another part of it is trying to get a decision helps ease one way or another, people's, uh, expectations of what's going to come down. Do I think that if you said we were gonna table this for two weeks until the next council meeting, um, I would tell you as far as the summer ball, I don't think that that's really practical with their timeframe, timeframe. It'd be tight. The, um, the camp, another one is, is, is getting tight. And those two in particular are more about trying to get notification of the people that do, um, utilize those so that they can make, um, alternative plans. Again, the camp is, I think we'd get about 140 kids through that, which is pretty darn significant. So again, if, if the decision is to not offer that this year, then those folks that have become accustomed to that, um, program obviously need to make, uh, different plans. And again, the aquatic center, um, could you, could you delay a decision on that for a little bit of time? Yeah. But again, I, I don't think that the practical implications of how do you practice social distancing and, and, you know, some of the concerns of mass gathering and, and all of that. You know, that, that's still going to be present regardless, in my humble opinion, of what phases, you know, we're working our way through. The expectation I think is still going to be, you know, that some of those things are a little more, um, watched for than, than typical. So.
Yeah, I think all, all the cities would run into the problem. You know, there'll be a lot of, a lot of campers looking for a home if there's a way to pull it off. I think Camp Nash is shut down, isn't it? I believe. So just trying to figure it, figure it out and not rush to a decision. If it doesn't benefit the city or, you know, hurt them, I'd love to see it tabled for two weeks, um, if it's possible.
Stevens?
Yeah, just like many of us, I hate seeing this stuff not being offered this summer. Some of my fondest memories of, we're coaching my kids in, in the summer ball programs. You know, both my kids have worked at, uh, the different offerings, the pool, at the, uh, you know, the, uh, summer camp. But the reality is we have a larger obligation to the community as a whole. And many of these programs, you're talking best case scenario because they can't start until you get to the green zone. And based upon what the latest reporting is in the in the Crown of the Globe in the last couple of weeks, those who have opened up in the last couple of weeks are now spiking, starting to spike again. I don't think we'll make it to the green zone anytime soon. So even if we held off for perfect conditions, I don't think they're going to happen. Unfortunately, I don't see us being able to really offer this stuff at all this summer. Nothing else?
Reeves?
No additional comments.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Unless there's another motion? Seeing none. I would ask for a vote, please.
Stevens?
Stevens, yes.
Gurley?
Gurley, yes.
Thompson?
Thompson, yes.
Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Mackey?
Regretfully, yes.
Wood?
Regretfully, yes.
Kip?
No.
Reeves?
Yes, Reeves.
Mayor, the motion passes.
Thank you, and thank all of you for your considered opinions. This is one of the harder issues that we've had to work our way through. This is a decision that will will have to help the community with over the next three to four months, just as we have with the restarting of these reopening of our economy. It's something that's impacting all of us, I'm sure. One of the big concerns I have as well. So we'll go ahead and start. That concludes everything. Now we'll move into the reports, and we'll go ahead and ask Sean for a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick reminder, Memorial Day, a different Memorial Day than most are probably used to is coming up next next week. So we do have some changes as far as trash service impact, City Hall, and then also the City Council meeting is rescheduled for the following or the the 26th, the Tuesday following. So again, some things going on there. Also, I want to congratulate Hannah, Ethan, and Kyra, the senior senate, the Bonner Springs Senior Citizens. Nancy Jones Johnson Scholarship was announced, and those three are recipients of a $1,000 scholarship towards their academic future. So congratulations to them. Some additional information is listed in the actual city manager report on that. And then lastly, I wanted to point out, bring up, just from the benefit of the the public as well as of course, the council, I did include a sort of our internal organizational phase reopening with the announcements of of several different documents of similar substance as far as phasing is concerned for the state and the and the county. This is something that we're working off internally to try to get things back to the new normal as as we know it. So again, this is just kind of giving everybody an understanding of how things will start to come back online. In particular, we are trying to make some changes in City Hall Community Center as far as how somebody publicly can come and do business within there. Things like Plexiglas and stickers. And again, a lot of the a lot of the similar things that you're seeing within businesses adjusting to this this new reality. Hoping through phase, we are in phase two right now as far as the county is concerned. We are working through the logistical aspect of all this. Again, City Hall, how people interact with that. We've also got the City Library, which the library board and Jack have been working through, trying get things opened up there as well. So again, they're they're working through some of those issues. We've also got Tiblo Transit that has been offline as we again try to work through the challenges of offering a high contact service like a public transit. So that's laid out as well. And again, a whole host of other things. Municipal Court is another big issue that logistically, we're trying to figure out how to deal with the the dockets that we have and even worse, a docket that's been held up for the last, oh, seven weeks. So two months. So this is again, some of the some of the practical challenges that we have and and also just again, an understanding of some of the protocols. This is actually, I can't remember where this came from or who actually did it. But it came through Mark, Mid American Regional Council. As far as just again, some of the new terminology that we've all come to appreciate, like social distancing, what that means for us internally. And again, this is this is stuff that is is pretty ubiquitous right now for everybody. Again, as far as what social distancing means, what six foot distancing means, the importance of washing your hands and hand sanitizer and things like that. So again, this is this is just meant to give a little bit of a glimpse as to what we're trying to do to get back into the swing of things. So again, happy to answer any questions related to that or anything else included in the written report. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sean. We'll go ahead and ask for council items, and we'll do that by roll call, also, please. And you're muted, Christina.
About that, Shannon?
No questions.
This is our council comments, right?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to mention when I was doing the research for our Hey, Charles, need you to go out of the room, buddy. Sorry, guys. When I was doing the research for our Quiet Zone project and their funding, what I was going to ask a question about it. I checked up on the Deffin Ball property, which is actually above it. And one of the properties, they continue to reappraise. So I wanted to thank Bonner and Sean for allowing me to go to the what was it, tax and property law class two years ago. It's had about a $200,000 return for us, or at least for Wyandotte County. For the city, it should add about 60,000 to 70,000. And the reason I say that is when I did the report in 2017, the valuation of that property, we were only receiving about 48,000. As of the update for 2020 appraisals, we should receive about 233,000 from that one property. I we still have two others that they haven't touched, though. I don't know how Deffin Ball is pulling off $900 an acre on the property adjacent to it. But Jeff, who was just on tonight, was one of the people that helped me with some of that stuff. And I'll be sending out more emails to see if we can get these reappraised and fought because this property as well as two others from Speedway, something at the company. Charles, thanks, buddy. I was just saying, thanks, Bonner, for letting me do that, and I'm still fighting the appraisal battle with this, as a lot of communities are. But hopefully that helps get our Quiet Zone paid for. Thanks.
Thompson?
Sean, I may have missed it somewhere, but Memorial Day service at the cemetery, I was asked about that.
I think the I know the mayor and Chris have kind of talked about that. So I'm not sure if the mayor is probably or Chris are probably better folks to ask that question.
Okay.
Yeah, we discussed this early on about the planning, but Christina, that have you canceled that?
I haven't officially canceled it, but I don't know how we would be able to pull that off with the restrictions that are still in place. The mayor and I talked about making a video recording of the different portions of this Memorial Day ceremony and putting it out on the website so that we are still honoring people. We just won't be able to do it in person.
Okay, and I don't know if Jim Jenkins is still on the air, but he's was asking about that also, and he has a big part in that with his VFW. He went to get the flags today. And anyway, I'll keep an eye out for what you find out. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mike.
On, and I'll be reaching out to you, Jim, probably tomorrow or the next day.
I just don't know if members aren't interested in trying to do it.
Right, and and we could have some nice video tribute with maybe a VFW representative there and nice video work. I don't know who is our videographer, but I the Bonner Springs High School has some great people that are very very good at that. So we'll try and put something together. We've talked about that.
Thank you.
Next.
Wood? Wood here. I would like to thank all of you who have this broadened horizon of what's going on and are doing your best to keep the city together. Thank you.
Gurley?
I had two things. I had talked with Sean and Mayor about the possibility of getting a testing COVID testing site out on the side of the world. I noticed that that didn't happen. Do you have any comment or additional information on why we continue to be ignored?
I
Go ahead.
I was just going to mention, I know they have it. I didn't hear it announced yet, but I believe the county is trying to set up a testing site at George Line in Wyandotte County Park. So there there will be the testing site located there. There will also be an announcement, a hopeful announcement soon, the next couple of days for an additional site. Not through the county health department, but private business putting that on. So again, look for that that announcement hopefully in the next couple of days. But again, so we'll have we'll have a county quote unquote sanctioned or operated testing site this week, and then also an announcement about a private business doing that as well. Hopefully, again, the next couple of days this week.
Thank you. That helps. I was disappointed when they put out the latest list and there was nothing west of 435. So that helps. The other thing is silly minor thing, the trench work that's being done along comp right at the four way stoplight. There particularly in the dark, I can see somebody veering to the right and ending up right in that trench. There's not a cone blocking that. And I just noticed it when I was out today that when they finish, they might want to make it really obvious to as you're going westbound up the hill, right in front of Dairy Dime.
Yep.
The it just is, it could easily be confusing if someone were to go to the right of that section of cones, it would be catastrophic.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We will, I have a I have a meeting tomorrow with those folks, so I'll bring that up that and that.
The cones are there. They just didn't get moved into place, it looks like.
Yeah, I see what you're saying because it's it's not clear what lane you're really supposed to be in. Yeah, I can. I will make sure that that's brought up tomorrow.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Kip?
Sean, is there, I know we had talked about it last year on the 32 Highway medians. They have a lot of huge chunks of gravel and crumbling and weeds. Is that something I know I know that KDOT is in charge of it. Can we clean it up just in our little section and take care of it? It's pretty dangerous. There's a lot of big rocks.
Yeah.
And it looks terrible.
Yeah. I believe that was brought up with Mr. Burrows, if I recall correctly. There are some issues with us doing the maintenance in that area. Ultimately, there's some some liability risk if we're if we send our folks out there and do those things. What I will do is I'll reach out to the state. I did notice it. And again, I always notice the weeds part of it. I just assumed I got there with my own weed whacker, but I will talk with KDOT and see if we can get something addressed. Like I like I said, you, I think somebody brought it up before, and I think we got a response that KDOT was doing a little bit more cleanup effort than what they've been doing over the recent past. So I'll do my best to remind them that they maybe need to check in here.
Yeah, they thank you. They put down beautiful roads, but those medians are pretty rough. And thank you, staff and recreation, too. I appreciate the online stuff with the six and an eight year old. They they enjoyed doing a lot of the recreational videos and so keep putting out great content, Justine, and I hope some new stuff comes out of this, just thinking differently.
Stevens?
Just real quickly, I was going to mention, Sean, thank you for that email on Wednesday, and I don't know if everybody's had a chance to follow that link to the restart YCO plan, which was alpha.yco.gov. It was very informative. In fact, I've had a couple of businesses who have reached out to me and have asked me some questions, and I have sent them that link. They have found it very informative from their standpoint on understanding, fully understanding what their obligations are, how the plan works for them. So thank you again for that email.
Absolutely.
That's it.
Reeves?
No additional comments. Thank you.
That's everyone, Mayor.
Thank you all very much. Yeah, I've had, I've been contacted by several businesses that are very concerned with the reopening and us being one of the last areas that will be able to open a lot of the commercial opportunities and referring them to the restart YCO and our our requirements of how we have to follow that is helpful to a lot of them. So thank you for for that information. It's it's a huge impact. It's a huge impact to businesses in our community that are competing with other businesses just in our neighboring counties as well as small business owners that are trying to reopen and and continue their livelihood as well as the large, large multi-state, multi-state commercial opportunities and and how they're impacted here in our local community too. So please encourage all everyone to access that restart YCO. We're bound by it, and they there's a lot of information on it as well as the AdAstra plan to reopen Kansas. The Windup County Health Department information that we get daily. This impact is not over. It's continuing to to be a significant impact to our community, whether you happen to have had anybody involved with the disease or not. So please, this isn't something that we can disregard. We have to respect it now as well as we start to reopen the community. It ours is not to say the how how effective our remediation attempts have been or how significant of a disease it is. Ours is just to follow the plan and work our way through it and protect the public health as best as possible. I had a couple of questions that continue. You mentioned Tiblo Transit, but do you have a date or maybe even a estimated time of arrival?
I think we've got it working through in phase three. So we're in phase two right now. Some of the issues that we have with with Tiblo Transit is really the disinfection of the vehicles after they're used. So we are trying to figure out what the best solution is to that. I know Chris has gotten a lot of information from the federal government as far as how to take care of some of those things. And again, we've got we've got some concerns as far as how to how to operate that as we normally do. So we are, we are working with that, and it is it is scheduled for that phase three, which is the next phase that we would be going into. um, which is the next phase that we would be going into. Uh, again, the hope is that over the next two weeks or so, we can fine tune exactly what, what needs to be done inside of those vehicles, what type of procedures, um, we need to follow, um, a- as far as handling cash and, and credit cards, and, uh, we don't even take credit cards, excuse me, um, how we handle all the cash, how we handle how many people can be on the bus at one time. So that's, um, again, that's our, our flexible timeframe is, right now is looking like phase three, um, the yellow phase.
Which would be after, um, May twenty-fifth, so thank you, that's at least, uh, some information. Uh, codes inspections, um, the codes department, they're, it's, it's weed time, and we have a great, um, harvest of weeds going on. So, uh, are they able to, uh, uh, continue the codes enforcement?
Yeah, they, um, and I think that was included in my city manager report. Uh, you should have the code enforcement report for April, um, that goes through as well as the map of, of everywhere. Um, keeping in mind that there is a, about a ten-day lag period between when weeds, especially at the start of the season, everybody gets one notice. Um, and that one notice takes two weeks unfortunately to deal with. Um, so the weeds started growing, and then we, somebody gets cited, they ultimately have ten days to, to correct it. The nice thing about weeds and high grass is that we only have to provide notice once to somebody. Um, any future failure to clean up, uh, the property for that specific issue, um, we can actually go onsite and do that, um, almost pretty quickly without having to do that ten-day notification. So that's, that's the issue, um, as it is every year. We, we have to give everybody a, a first notice, and that takes unfortunately about two weeks to get, get through the channels. And that's, uh, state laws is where that, um, ultimately comes from.
Very good, I, I figured as much, but I, I appreciate that greatly. Uh, since you're gonna be talking to, uh, KDOT, you might mention the last time I went up the, uh, um, entrance ramp to Seven Highway going north off of K thirty-two, there was a, a concern about a car linked up that ramp of a pothole. I don't know if they fixed it or it's, uh, uh, filled up with, uh, rocks or something, but, um, I had to swerve around it. So you might, uh, that's been a constant battle for them since that, uh, entrance ramp went in. So you might re-indicate that to them. Um, the, the construction that's going on, on, uh, Kansas Avenue, the curbs and, uh, edge, um, that seems to be going real well, those, and they're, uh, milling overlay. Um, I haven't been up there today, but, um, the other day, they were in the middle of, uh, milling oak, or milling that, and it seems to be, uh, I didn't know how rough it was until just the milled surface was an improvement. So, um, that's, that's going to be a nice addition to Bonner Springs, and after it's painted, uh, it'll be very good. Uh, they've started the, the sidewalk and curb replacement program in downtown Bonner, and, uh, some of those areas have really, uh, my, there was a lot of, uh, um, deterioration in the sidewalk and curves that had to be taken out, especially around Second Street. That's quite a bit. So I appreciate is that they're walking through, working through that. I know, uh, um, they, they've done an excellent job so far, and they've just been tearing it out. So they, uh, that, that'll be a nice addition to Bonner. Do you have an estimated time, how long they'll be, uh, on Main Street?
On, oh, I think it's a matter of a, it's a couple of weeks project. The, the laborious part of that is, right now, if you go by, you'll see the bricks that they're having to hand remove, uh, and remove the, the sand. I wanted to say it was, um, I want to say it was two weeks when I talked with Frank last, uh, last week about it. So that's, uh, you know, dependent on the weather.
Oh, yeah, but, uh, thank you, I, it looks, uh, they've certainly done a lot in just a day or two, so. Um, other than that, I, I don't have any additional, uh, items. Uh, sure, appreciate all of the council people and how well they've done and how much this staff has helped. Um, if you have any concerns or anybody, uh, reaches out to a council member, please put them in contact with the City Hall. You can reach out to them through all the normal, uh, phone numbers and emails. Uh, and they have been excellent in getting back to, uh, certainly all mine needs and all the ones I've heard about. So, other than that, I stand for questions. Wonderful, seeing none, we are adjourned.